All right, why don't we, seeing that it's 7:04, why don't we open the meeting of June 1st, 2020, of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Present on the Zoom is the host, Charles Sealy. Members of the board, President Peter Parcellin, Kasai Nasrallah, Gerald Joy, Dan Bosari, and myself, Robert Gaynor. And Mr. Durgan should be joining us shortly. Also in attendance is Halifax Attorney Amy Queso, and of course, the applicants. Just so everybody knows, this hearing is being recorded, and the same protocol as we will use during the Zoom meeting as we do our regular meetings, that all questions and comments will be directed through the chair, and if there are answers to be found out and given, I'll direct them and get answers back. So with that, we'll open the meeting. We have a couple of things we have to do first. Let's go through the minutes and approve the minutes. The first one, I take it the members have been able to have some time to review and correct them. So why don't we start with the minutes of March 9th, 2020. Any changes, corrections, deletions, additions? Please feel free to join in. Let me know. Dan, you're always good for checking on us. How did we look for the minutes?
Yeah, I read them all. That one's fine, I think.
I read through them all, too. I didn't see any changes. All right, that being said, I want to take a motion to accept the minutes, as presented from the June 9th, 2020 meeting.
Motion to accept minutes for 3/9/2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor to accept the minutes of March 9th, 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. That's 4-0-0. Okay, moving on to the minutes of April 13th, 2020. Any changes, deletions, corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of April 13th, 2020, as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April 13th, 2020, as presented.
Okay, I have a motion seconded. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of April 13th, 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, 4-0-0. Okay, moving on to the minutes of May 4th, 2020. If I don't have any changes, deletions, or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May 4th, 2020. I read through those all, so I didn't see any changes.
May 4th, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of May 4th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes also. And the last one, the minutes of May 6th, 2020. If there are any changes, corrections, or deletions, I'll accept the motion to accept those minutes, as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of 5/6, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented of the May 6th, 2020 hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, awesome.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
Is it okay if we stamp your signature on those?
Yes. Do we have to vote on that, Alana?
If you wouldn't mind.
Okay, there is the, I think you all received the email, there is a signature approval that we do have to vote on, so that we can sign off on the, well, on two different things, right, Alana? Both the bills and the minutes and whatnot?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All those in favor of signing off on that form to approve the signatures, just signify by saying aye.
Do we need to make a motion? Do we need to make a motion and second it?
Yes, we do need to make a motion and second it.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve stamp signature for the minutes in the bills presented tonight.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the signature forwarding. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that good, Alana? You all set for that? And then you just, or do we need to make a motion and vote on the one person to sign off on the bills, Alana?
Yeah, so when you get to the bills, if you want to just approve each bill, and then approve with a motion, who will be the one to come in and sign those bills?
Okay, we'll do that. If you could just remind me to do that, don't forget.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Alana. Okay, on our first appointment, we still have a couple of minutes there. We had a, to continue the discussion on, from Kristen Merls of 26 Bow Street, building the metal garage and building, are the Merls there? Or Kristen, are you with us? I do not see her. I do not see them there. This way? Oh, no, Alana. I don't see the Merls here. Well, we did have a discussion, and there was, we did receive a letter requesting some information regarding the zoning bylaw that directly affects the size of the garage. You can put up, the Merls did send a letter saying they couldn't find it. Alana did some research. She found for a garage, 16712F, that first, the garage cannot be greater than the foundation of the primary residence, and also, it can't exceed 884 square feet, if I have that correct. Dan, did you look that up? Did you find anything on that?
I actually drove by there today, just to take a look for myself, what was going on. And John, the husband, was actually out. We actually parked for a couple of minutes. And, you know, he kind of showed me what he was planning on doing. And he said, yeah, he was concerned about the square footage.
Well, that's a basic research on that. It did say a maximum of 884 square feet for a garage.
We can leave that with a special permit, though, I believe it says.
And then, besides that, it said in, as a subsection, that the garage size cannot be greater than the foundation of the primary residence.
So what he's proposing is, I think, 28 by 30, which is less than the footprint of the house.
Okay.
And it was kind of a financial situation where, if we try to put up, he's trying to put up, because we all saw it, the space metal building he's trying to put up. You know, it's a nice looking building. I guess, for him, for them, it's a financial issue where they can, if they had to go with a traditional stick building, it was probably not affordable. And I think the location of trying to put it in is where it needs to go, because it's a garage. He has room on the other side of the lot, but you wouldn't put the garage on the non-entrance side. You would always put the garage on the entrance side, where the driveway is. So.
All right, so as far as the discussion goes, Dan, although we don't have an application submitted by the Merls on Bow Street, as of such, they were trying to just find out some.
Right, right. So my opinion is, I think it's possibly doable, I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
As long as they. Everybody would have to look at it.
All right, I'm sure they'd be calling in to find out, or even get direction from the billing inspector as far as complying with 16712F. That was the only thing I could find on it, or Alana, for that matter. All right. So that's the, that was on 26 Bow Street. I did the same thing. I went down to Brooktree there and looked at a similar garage, Dan. It was a metal building, but it was that textured. So, I mean, wow, you couldn't even tell it was a metal building. It was, in the cul-de-sac, right at the very end, they had one. It was, it was a nice looking building, actually. It's not what I, anything like I expected, to be honest with you.
I agree.
All right, did we, but again, you know, I'm sure they'll be in contact with either the building inspector or the office to find out as far as they're making their final decision, and whether or not they're going to submit an application to the zoning board.
I didn't print out the letter. I don't have in front of me. Were there two or three specific questions? I don't have in front of me.
No, as I recall, the only thing I remember was that they couldn't, they couldn't find anything on the zoning board, in the zoning bylaws in regards to size. They said they looked through it and couldn't find it. So.
I see.
So that's where the 16712F.
Yeah, and I remember the other question they had was, is it an auxiliary building or is it a garage? And I think it falls on the garage.
Okay. All right, good.
That was the other question.
All ready? What else do we have? I don't see, Bob hasn't, Durgan has not come in on my screen, anyway. Don't see him here. What else do we have on our agenda? Well, it's about 17 after. Why don't we run through the bills quick? Just give Bob a little bit more time. We really want Bob to be in on this discussion. The first bill was, Alana, maybe you can help us out with this, the Plinton Halifax Kingston Express for the re-advertising for $84. And it's also for petition 921 advertisement for $84, and petition number 922 advertisement for the total of $84. I'll accept a motion from the board to pay the balance of the three bills submitted to the zoning board.
I'll make a motion to approve all three bills for petitions 921 and 922.
And 920.
And 920. Sorry, I knew there was another one in there.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of the bills for the Plinton Halifax Kingston Express for petitions 920, 921, and 922, each for $84 on each petition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And Alana needs an okay, so that even though the board votes to approve, you know, the bills, one of us can go up there, and it's only required one of us to sign off on it, due to the circumstances of the pandemic. So it's okay with you, gentlemen, I'm around during the day, I can go up and sign them off, if that's okay with the other members of the board.
Yeah. You want a motion?
All right, so I'll entertain a motion that, to be able to sign off on the bills as just one member is required, as long as we sign off on this. So is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to give Bert Gaynor signature authority for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And do I have a second? I'm sorry, was it a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion second to be able to, the signature authority to sign off on the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, passes. Alana, is that good for you? Was that all you need on that?
Yes, that should be fine. I will just need you to sign that last line on the signature authority form for 2020.
Okay.
I sent that in an email, but if you want to just come in to the town hall, I can have Terry give that to you, so you can sign it.
All right, great. I'll do that tomorrow. That'll be great. Thanks, Alana. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, have we got Bob Durgan in yet? Oh, there we have Robert.
I'm here.
How you doing? Okay, good. Thank you. We can, we can start the hearing. Mr. Gordon, there you are. Gordon Andrews. Hearing for, regarding petition 922, Gordon C. Andrews, Amanda Estates, the Building and Occupancy Permits and Site Plan Approval Appeal. Gordon, would you like to bring us up to date here, please?
Sure. So since I filed the appeal, the zoning board made a determination that the party trust does not have all the appropriate permits necessary to continue with the project. And if you look at section 167-19, sorry, I'm just trying to find the window that it's open on.
Yep.
It says, "No building shall be constructed or reconstructed, and no use of a building or land in connection with the building shall be begin, shall be begun, or changed without a permit having been issued by the building inspector. No permit shall be issued until such construction, alteration, or use as proposed complies in all respects with the provisions of this chapter."
Okay, is anything else, Gordon?
I mean, that's the gist of the building permits, if you want to get into the site plan as well.
Well, let me refer to Amy Queso, the attorney. Amy, are you there with us?
I am.
Oh, there you are. Amy, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong here, or maybe make it more clear to me. We had the zoning board, when we had our remand hearing of May 4th, 2020, in the Zoning Board of Appeals, we voted that two out of the three questions that were asked of us by Judge Bray, might pronounce his name right. Does this, where we voted on two out of the three, does this come under what the board has already voted on?
So, yeah, so the board did. On May 4th, the board went through, you know, I guess the only difference between May 4th and tonight is that on May 4th, it was a remand hearing from the court, and there were instructions from the court as to what you had to find. And you did find that there was a missing special permit. However, the owner of the property and the applicant for the development has since applied for that special permit.
Right.
And I know that there was a request from the applicant to continue this zoning board hearing until the planning board meets, which was on June 18th. It's my understanding, I think there was just no response to that request. But, you know, in my opinion, it makes sense to find out what the planning board's going to do. The planning board, in this circumstance, the planning board is listed in the zoning bylaw as the special permit granting authority, under the special permit that they're looking for. It's 167, I think, 17F. And so, so, you know, it would make sense to find out what the planning board, if the planning board issues that special permit or not.
Okay. Gordon, did you hear all of that? I'm sorry.
Yes, Bert. But the point, the permit shouldn't have been issued, because they don't meet the requirements. So they should be revoked until they meet the requirements. It shouldn't be continued when they get to keep the permits in place. The permit should be revoked, and if they get the permit, they should be reissued.
Well, Gordon, I can, in my own opinion, I mean, you can ask the other members of the board, I feel as though, we've discussed all of that, and we have voted on it, that all of the permits, variances, and revisions that were required, were voted on by the board, by our board, on the, on the May 4th, 2020 hearing, as Attorney Queso just made mention. So I agree with the Attorney Queso, that basically, I think the, you know, until the planning board reviews and votes on the special permit regarding, you know, the protection of the watershed, there isn't anything else that our board can do, you know? It'd be, why would we vote on something and then, if in fact, the special permit's not even in effect, or can't be put into effect? And again, our board has already voted on, I don't even know how many times at this point, on the other, on the other two instances that the Judge Bray has told us to get back to the land court on.
So the point.
Unless any of the other members of the board feel the same way, Jerry, or Peter, or Kasai, or Bob, or Dan, you know, that's just my own personal opinion on that one. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Bert, I feel basically the same way. All the information that was given to us on the, on this, on this particular item, the permit, it looks like they.
They can hear us.
No, they can't.
Yes, they can. Just a minute, stop.
I have no idea what that was.
But I think, from everything that we've seen or heard, and all the approvals they received from all the other departments, I see no reason why they won't get this permit from the, from the planning board. They don't seem to have any, any problems with any of the restrictions that have been placed on them. So I think, I agree with you. We should wait until, until we find the hearings of the planning board.
But, and my point, Jerry, also being that, we already voted on and discussed the first two items of, in that remand hearing of May 4th, and we voted that the party trust does comply, and does meet the requirements of the permits, the variances, and everything that we had granted. The modifications, the, all of them. And I personally see no reason to discuss it again. I mean, it's not like we can change the vote from the May 4th hearing.
No, I agree.
Peter?
Yeah, I mean, I read the letter from April, from April 7th. And it talks all about, it talks about the building permits, but then it goes into all the stuff that we, it sounds like was already voted on. So that's, I kind of, I kind of agree with that point. I'm seeing that, I was looking at, as you were mentioning, Gordon, at 16719. I guess I'm not sure what they don't have, or why those building permits were, you think they were, weren't, shouldn't have been issued, I guess, is what I'm confused about.
They shouldn't have been issued, because you guys found, at your last meeting, that they don't have all the permits in place.
No, no, no. That's two different things, Gordon, that they're talking about. They're talking about, not that they shouldn't have been issued, it's the fact that we voted on that they were issued, and that they did meet the requirements. So what I'm saying is, it's moot. It's, we've already voted on that. It's, as far as I'm concerned, there's no need to discuss it again. I mean, it's been voted on by the board. The only thing that hasn't been voted on was, in fact, the special permit from the planning board, which is to be conducted on June 18th. And then, again, as Jerry said, it looks as though, even when we had a hearing from May 4th, the requirement set forth to obtain that special permit, you know, as far as gallons and per day, and septic system, seem, all seem to line up. So it all, until the actual planning board votes on it, and either A approves it, or B denies it, it doesn't make any sense to keep going round and round and round again.
But, but you made the decision that they don't have the required permits, and the bylaws say that you have to have all the required permits before you can be issued the building permits. So you made the determination, they don't have the requirements. So what I'm asking you to do is revoke the building permits until they meet those requirements.
They're only missing one permit. They're only missing the permit for the aquifer, and that's going to go back to the planning board.
So they don't have that, is what I'm saying?
Only one permit. They have every other permit in place. They have every other permit in place. It was voted on by the planning board, and it was voted on by the zoning board, and they all agreed on it. All of a sudden, after three years, they found out that they needed a special permit for the aquifer. Now, they go back and find the planning board, then it comes back to us. And that's all we're going to vote on. That's all we're here to discuss. We're not going to discuss the whole thing all over again.
Okay, so I'm appealing everything. I have to do this legally. I have to appeal this. So if you guys don't want to deal with it, you can make the determination that you don't want to deal with it. Give me my decision, and then I can appeal it, and that's the process that I have to go through.
Gordon, and what I'm saying is, Gordon, bottom line is, we are giving you our decision. It's not, we're not giving, we've done that. We've voted on it. Our decision has been clear, is that all the permits, the revisions, the variances, they've all, they've all been voted on by the Zoning Board of Appeals to be in place. As far as, since 2014, when this first came up, since then, six years later, when they decided they needed a special permit for the water protection, then again, that wasn't, or hasn't been an issue over the last six years.
The reason why that issue comes up is because you allowed them to change the plans. So now that's a new issue, because before, the aquifer protection wasn't, when they were showing a six-lot subdivision. And each building was on a separate lot. Now they don't meet those requirements. That's why the issue comes up.
I think the confusion for me is that we're, it's, a lot of that stuff in the letter relitigated all the stuff that seems to be settled, regardless of how anybody feels from the board's perspective. But I get your point, where they're missing the aquifer special permit. And I don't know if Ms. Queso can kind of talk to that, because I know that she's looked into this stuff. But if, all of the other bylaws don't, to me, don't seem like they apply to this question. I mean, I guess there's a little bit of a question as to the fact that they, do they, do they get the building permits? Are they able to be issued if they don't have that aquifer protection, which I think is the only thing you're really asking. But I don't know if we've already litigated that from our perspective, too. So, like, I want to be fair about it, but it does sound, it does sound like we talked about this stuff, and maybe.
Amy, what, Mrs. Queso, Amy, what, how are you interpreting that, or how do you look?
So 16719 says, "As proposed, complies in all respects with the provisions of this chapter, or with a decision rendered by the Board of Appeals." So you have to read the entire sentence. I think it's important to read the entire sentence. And I think that, and Mr. Andrews can correct me if I'm wrong, I think that his appeal is twofold. The first, the first is that he is looking for this board to revoke the building, the amended building permits based on 167. amended building permits based on 167, the beginning of that sentence in 16719. In my opinion, you have to read the entire sentence, which also says, or with the decision rendered by the board of appeals. Now, I think that Mr. Andrews' second purpose is to appeal the site plan approval because under site plan, it's, it's a little bit, it's a different, it's a different process how you go about appealing a site plan. You can't just, he did not have the opportunity to appeal the site plan decision within 20 days from the planning board. He had to actually wait until building permits were issued pursuant to that site plan. So I was just going to jump in at the end and, you know, after you guys, I know that, I know that Mr. Chairman, you're going through and letting members, you know, speak, but I, I think that at some point during this hearing, I think we do need to let Mr. Andrews discuss that second prong of his appeal, particularly because, you know, he said he's going to move to the next step with regard to the appeal. So I think he deserves the opportunity to, you know, present his case here also.
All right. Thank you. Gordon, did you get all that or are you, do you want to speak to that or you need to, you want your attorney to, however you want to do it is fine with me.
I can start if you want and then my attorney will. Okay, so this plan was submitted in November after multiple other modifications. It was approved on December 2nd. That site plan shows lots and a private way, which not, which haven't been created because the only way to create the lots and the private ways through subdivision. They have not gone through subdivision control, so therefore there is no private way, there are no lots and there's no frontages for those lots. And it was this board's decision on November 4th, I believe, that stated that each building had to be on a separate lot and each building had to have 150 feet of frontage.
And is that the second part of what Ms. Amy Cressel was just talking about it? That you wanted to explain the second prong, so to speak?
Yeah, that the site plan approved does not create a way and it doesn't create lots. It's just, it's just like the plan that was presented before, it didn't create those lots and it didn't create a private way.
If I, if I may jump in, this is Attorney Anthony Ponder Bianco on behalf of the party trust. I know you've dealt with Attorney Adam Brodsky previously, but I wanted to voice the concerns and echo the same concerns that the board has raised tonight and Attorney Cressel, that because of the hearing on June 18th for the planning board, that it, and the litigation that has already concluded and been established here by the courts, that the issue for remand for this board really should be held at a later date. I think it's concluded and we've already decided on the majority of these issues and that last remaining issue of the last special permit required that we're going for on June 18th, I think that's the only remaining issue left outstanding for this board to decide and consider and that's where we are right now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't recognize you before, I was looking for Mr. Brodsky, my fault.
That's good, right, I understand.
Amy, as far as that analysis goes, how do you view that?
So, so that is the argument that was brought up on May 4th. And so it's, it was, I mean, this board made a decision that, that it did not agree with Mr. Andrews' argument regarding site plan and that they received site plan from the planning board, which was required, and they received a special permit from the board, which was required. And so, you know, I think I would agree with Mr. Purcell in where you, you have already determined those two things. I just wanted to make sure that Andrew's had the opportunity to, to present that.
All right, but Amy, as far as what Mr. Gordon was saying also, just for my own benefit, as far as the frontage and lot size and individual lots, did the court rule on that, it ruled that, if I understand it correctly, they'd determined the provisions of 16712 did in fact override or control over?
Yes, so it's my understanding that prior to trial, there was a motion for summary judgment was, was briefed and argued and the judge made a determination that the more detailed requirements of Section 12 control and not the general requirements of Section 10.
Okay, well, just for my own benefit, I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but-
Oh, no, I'm just trying, I'm all set.
I just wasn't sure I understood it correctly or whatever. Gordon, where are you?
I asked Amy a question.
What's that?
Does she believe Chapter 167-11 applies to this project because she previously stated it does?
Amy?
I am checking on that.
I'm looking for that too.
Oh, that's the table of dimensional density regulations. And so if you go to the table, there's footnotes, it's my recollection. There's footnote for multifamily development, I think. Is that what you're referring to?
Previously, you had stated at the November zoning board meeting that each building had to be on a lot that had 150 feet of frontage.
Uh huh.
So has your opinion on that changed?
If I may, this is sorry, Attorney Cressel, to interrupt you briefly, I apologize, but I don't think that's before the board, whether or not Attorney Cressel agrees whether or not that applies. Specifically, the June 1st, 2020 order from the court remands, strictly whether or not the special permits have been issued ultimately. And pardon?
I'm not appealing that decision right here. Right here, I'm appealing the site plan, which I'm saying under 16711 applies.
Again, but I don't believe that that is subject to what was vacated and remanded by the zoning board.
That's not what this-
If I may, Mr. Andrews, let me finish. What was vacant and remanded by the zoning board was what was determined in the May 4th zoning board hearing and that's where we are today, attempting to get the special permit on June 18th before the planning board. That's not, that's not the process before the zoning board currently.
That is, that is not what I'm appealing here tonight, sir. I'm appealing the site plan, which was from the modified project. There's the one court case that's moving forward under appeal with Judge Vey. There's another, that Judge Vey is not taking up this section of the modifications. He said that's not under his control, so I have to go back to the zoning board, appeal their, appeal the site plan, appeal the building permits. And if they don't find in my favor, I have to appeal that to court. But that's not the same process, there's multiple prongs. It would be a separate court case and that's what's been filed at Plumb Superior Court.
Amy, if you'd like to finish your thought there, I'm sorry.
So, so I guess my thought is, the reason why I'm confused is because site plan is under Section 28. And so the planning board under site plan, they determine things such as internal circulation, screening, you know, traffic, pedestrian traffic, things like that. The, the special permit for the multifamily development that was granted by the zoning board of appeals would be the one that would determine dimensional requirements and, and, you know, not more detrimental to the neighborhood, things, things like that, which it's, it's my opinion that on May 4th, this board determines that, that that was met. That the special permit was valid and it was met.
Uh oh.
Someone's not happy.
Yes, I thought somebody wasn't happy. Gordon, anything else that you wanted to bring to the board's attention?
Nope.
All right, there was nothing else then? I don't know how the other board members feel, I mean, some, some of the others, we expressed an opinion of Bob or, or Dan, you know, did you want to add anything? And, you know, as far as, I do feel agree with Amy Cressel, that bottom line, until that special permit is reviewed and voted upon by the planning board, and we have, where we have already voted in the court and in some instances, you know, has also found a decision, I personally don't see the need to discuss it any further until we find out whatever the results may happen to be. Bob, I don't know, how do you feel about it?
I agree, I think we've discussed it a lot, voted on it. I'd like to wait to see how the other special permit is with the planning board.
All right. Dan, how about you? I'd like to hear your opinion.
I agree, any determination we make would be put in the cockpit for the horse, they'll let the planning board do their job first.
Okay, I got Cassia and I got Jerry, I did get Peter. So I don't, where else do we go from here? I don't see any need to vote on anything tonight unless somebody else wants to add anything else. Amy, we got everything covered?
Yes, but I, I do, you would need to continue this, this public hearing.
Until that-
Yeah, and then that would, that would allow, because if you, if you closed it and then, you know, whatever happened at the planning board, Mr. Andrews would then have to go through all of this again. So if, if we could just continue it till after the planning board and then if the, you know, we could decide on where you want to go from there, like you all, like you all said, to wait and see what the planning board does.
All right.
And it's my understanding that the planning board is meeting on June 18th.
June 18th, 2020. All right, I'll entertain a motion here then to continue our hearing till, that would, that would be our July hearing. Alana, have you got a date on that or you just leave it open ended?
July 13th.
July 13th. Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to continue the hearing regarding the application by Mr. Andrews until our July 13th hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue the meeting 13th.
Until July 13th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on, on the floor and been seconded to continue the, this hearing regarding this matter until the July 13th hearing. Voting on this will be Peter Purcellin, Cassia Mizrahi, Robert Durgen, Jerry Joy and myself. I'll take a voice vote. Peter?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could you just specify a time for that hearing? Please?
We could put it in for 7:15. I was waiting to see how busy, you know, that hearing may be, Alana, and then kind of, you know, put it towards the end of the night if, but, well, we could put it on for 7:15, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Dan, how do you feel on that?
I agree, yes.
Okay, awesome. It passes that we, the hearing will continue until the July 13th hearing.
Thank you, board.
What's that? After the planning board, correct. All right, anything else? Amy, anything else we should be discussing on that? Are we all good?
I do not have anything else.
All right. All right, what else do we have on, on our agenda? We have, we have, I don't know, did the other members see the correspondence from Mr. Paul Downey of 61 Pine Street North in Halifax regarding the right of way? It's, I don't know, it sounded to me after reading it over, basically this is a civil matter, I don't think it has anything to do with the zoning board of appeals. I, I don't see it unless I'm missing something. I guess there's a right of way down the property that Mr. Diaz has been using or has been permissioned to use and I guess some of the other neighbors and to include some of the other company. The letter said UPS and I think FedEx used it as a cut through or whatever, but I don't see that having anything to do at all with the zoning board of appeals, to be perfectly honest with you. I think if he doesn't want his neighbors cut through his yard, that would be a civil matter. I don't see it as a, as a zoning issue or zoning board issue unless someone else feels different. Alana, if I got that correctly, is that about the size of it?
Pounds, good to me.
No, I mean, am I missing anything else other than that? I think that's what the letter said or the correspondence said.
Yes, I believe you are correct.
Charlie, are you still there? Oh, he left.
Still here, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I was just wondering if I was-
I wasn't facing the screen, so you didn't even see my bald spot.
There's a lot of that going around, Charlie.
I don't know if there's enough air in the house by now after three months.
I think it's something in the water.
But yes, I understand it's a complaint, but it's nothing that the ZBA, ZBA would have jurisdiction over. It's either, you know, if he wants to file criminal trespass, he can do that, but that's with the department. If it's a matter of property rights, who has the right to traverse Pine Street North or over where he's indicating he owns, then again, you know, as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, that's a civil matter, not for us.
Okay, that, that's how I looked at it when I read it over, so, I don't know if it's necessary to send him a letter off or anything to that. It was just a correspondence, there wasn't any type of application or anything like that.
Basically saying, you know, that it's something not within the jurisdiction of the ZBA, we appreciate notifying the board of his issues, but you just don't have jurisdiction.
Right. All right, I missed the first part, Charlie came and kind of broken up. Do you think a letter is necessary to send off to him?
Yeah, I think just for courtesy's sake, yeah.
All right, Alana, I'll be, we'll compose something, we'll send it off. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
All righty. What do we have else for other business? Petition 920, the Country Club Estates, Party B, comprehensive permit. We have a, May 6th, it must be June 6th, 2020 special scheduled meeting.
No, that, that was my fault, sorry about that. It's June 17th.
June 17th, okay. I don't have anything else. Gentlemen, you have anything else you do business or anything we'd like to discuss? Amy, as far as I can, as far as I could tell, it's hurry up and wait at this point, I guess.
Yes, for, for both and then also for Country Club Estates. And I think that Arlana has already forwarded you some of the submittals from the peer review, which will be discussed at that meeting.
Right. I did see some of them, they're rather lengthy, to be honest with you. Couple million. All right, anybody else, any other business, any other topics? We good?
Good.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.